The following program is brought to you by the League of Women Voters, Oakland area. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan organization established to encourage citizen participation in government. It never supports or opposes any political party or candidate. The statements and opinions of the candidates are presented in the interest of public service and in no way are to be construed as endorsement thereof by the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters takes no responsibility for any of the views or facts stated by the candidates.
And welcome to this forum for the city of Sylvan Lake. Today is September 22, 2022. This forum will be featuring the five candidates who have filed for city council for the city of Sylvan Lake. This is a four-year term. The sponsors of this forum are the League of Women Voters Oakland area. I am Jerry Burden, a member of the League of Women Voters. The League of Women Voters is a trusted, national, nonpartisan political organization. Our members do the hands-on work to safeguard democracy. While we never endorse a candidate, we are directly involved in shaping important issues and keep our community strong. As a League of Women Voters member, I have the opportunity to contribute in a leadership role such as this that has great impact on local, state, and national issues. If you're interested in joining the League of Women Voters to make a similar impact, I would encourage you to visit our website, L W V O A dot org. The League of Women Voters in Oakland County are the sponsors of this candidate's forum. We do not endorse any candidate or political party. The views expressed by the forum are those of the candidates and the sponsors take no responsibility. The candidates in alphabetical order are David Bowman, Feather Buchanan, Ben Clark, Gary Voels, and Michael Zabreski. This format for this forum has been established by the League of Women Voters. We ask the council, the candidates, to answer the questions with their views only and not to interrupt another candidate. Candidates will be submitting, will be answering questions submitted by the audience and screened by league members Bonnie Goftoff and Richard Heavenrich. The format is follows: All candidates will be given one minute, sorry, two minutes for opening statements in alphabetical order. Closing candidates will be in one minute in reverse order. Candidates will have one minute to answer each question. Moderator will be mentioned that the candidates before each question. All candidates allow equal time to answer the questions. If the candidates will have, when the candidates have 15 seconds, our timer, Kelly Williams, will indicate 15 seconds and when to stop. We will begin opening statements with Mr. Bowman.
Well, good evening to my fellow residents of Sylvan Lake. My name is David Bowman, and I want to start off by saying thank you to the League of Women Voters. Thank you to those that may be watching at home, Channel 15, and those in the audience. I am an experienced public servant, and I'm looking for an opportunity to serve our community. I'm passionate about service. I am passionate about this community. I have been a resident for just over two years, and I currently serve as the constituent service director and community outreach director for Trinity Health Oakland, where I manage a small group of passionate individuals that provide economic development for our local community and investments to our local community as well. I again am looking to, to serve this community. I've represented communities previously and looking to use that experience, background, and education to foster a more cohesive community here in Sylvan Lake. I represent a fresh voice and a fresh base, and I look forward to gaining your support.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
Good evening. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this evening. I'm Feather Buchanan. I'm running for Sylvan Lake City Council. I'm born and raised Michigander and have the privilege to call Sylvan Lake home for over 10 years. I have a son and his family and a daughter living in the city also. I have owned a small business, have chaired and volunteered numerous charity events, have worked with area corporations in relocation. I love working with people and solving issues. I'm passionate about Sylvan Lake, and I'm running to continue our positive energy, bringing people together through music, concerts, salons, speakers, food, and small business. I am very proud of our Wednesday game night, started over a year ago and are very successful. Every Wednesday, we play cards, mahjong, yuca yoga, pickleball when the weather's good. This summer, I spearheaded expansion of game night for the outdoors. Safety is a priority to me. We have a Sunday dinner as a family, and last week, when it was still warm, I watched my granddaughter fly down the driveway and disappear down the street. No one gave it a second thought. We're so fortunate kids can be kids in Sylvan Lake, and they can meet their friends at the parks and community center. We walk the streets day and night without a concern. We need to thank our chief of police and officers for their service and diligence in keeping us all safe. Sylvan Lake is a unique community, and we all need to make that, the spirit in Sylvan moves forward in a positive manner. I respectfully ask for your vote to allow me to serve the community I have a passion for.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Hello. My name is Ben Clark. I'm the current mayor of Sylvan Lake and running for reelection this November. I have been a resident for 15 years, and I own a skateboard store, a skateboard and snowboard store on Orchard Lake Road in Kegel Harbor. I have two children and a wife who are deeply involved in the community. I also serve on the planning commission and was instrumental in the revision of the master plan. I hope everyone has had the chance to look at the draft. A little less than four years ago, I ran on the idea that young people needed to get involved in politics to learn from experienced leaders. The passing of the torch ensures our transitions go seamlessly. I brought new ideas and different experience to my role, and I am proud of what I accomplished in the past four years. While on council, we weathered a pandemic unlike anything we've seen in our lifetime. I was appointed mayor in the middle of it with just two years served. Transitioning to Zoom-based meetings and increased isolation wasn't easy for any of us. However, with two new members, I was tasked with unifying the council and growing their trust. I wouldn't be afforded the normal inroads to achieve that, so with council meetings being remote, I kind of changed the cadence of it, and I brought a more lighthearted and more responsive to new ideas approach. I gained their trust by being honest, thoughtful, and judicious and supportive. As your mayor, I seek to empower others so that we can all thrive. We are a council that gets along and shows respect for each other even during disagreement. We share goals and use our talents and experience to make Sylvan Lake the best we can. As a city, we came together and grew our outdoor community events to help cope with this new normal. As a council, we approved the application process to encourage more community events in Sylvan Lake. Residents stepped up and began organizing. Concerts and food trucks on a very regular basis have become the norm in summer months. This application process paved the way for community swap sales, yoga, and game night every Wednesday, which was organized by Feather. I am pleased to see the community center active and being used as intended.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Valloy.
First off, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this forum and to the residents who are in attendance and for those that will watch this on Civic Center TV. My name is Gary Voels. I'm 54 years old, and I've been a resident of Sylvan Lake for six years. I'm married to Sandy Kushevitz Voels in the back there, and she has been a resident for almost 22 years and owned three houses. Currently, we reside at 2630 Garland. I'm recently retired after serving 32 years in law enforcement. I retired at the rank of deputy chief of police for the city of Dearborn Heights. I have a bachelor's degree from Madonna University, and I have completed police staff and command school from Eastern Michigan University. Serving people over the years has shaped me to understand the importance of considering all sides of issues before making decisions. I believe this will serve me, serve Sylvan from a, I can serve Sylvan from a completely different perspective. In my career, I have extensive experience in conflict resolution, and I possess the ability to empathetically handle concerns and complaints for our residents. My role as an administrator with Dearborn Heights has prepared me with experience in budgeting, human resources, bid proposals, research and development, purchasing, and grant preparation. Prior to retiring, I was successful in obtaining federal grants for body worn cameras, building equipment, COVID safety equipment, and multiple grants for police and police equipment and other crime fighting tools through the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Association. I pledge to represent each of you citizens to the best of my ability and to remain neutral and unbiased during various challenges and conflicts, all while operating within the budgetary constraints of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Zabreski.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Michael Zabreski, and I'm truly honored to be sitting here as a candidate for Sylvan Lake City Council. I want to also thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and I want to share my respect to the other candidates who are sitting here tonight. I'm a 27-year resident. I started my family here. I raised two daughters who are both now in college, and I plan to retire here. I also have a wonderfully supportive and equally involved life partner and spouse, Liz, who many of you know. I'm running for city council tonight to help ensure that Sylvan Lake continues to be the prettiest little city in Michigan and the most desirable place to live. My qualifications include a master's degree in finance from Wade State University, along with years of experience in finance and human resources. I currently work in the employee benefits department at Stellantis, where my responsibilities include negotiating large multi-year healthcare contracts. I perform the finance function for a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit, and I run the company's comprehensive onsite wellness program. If reelected, I will continue to make all residents, from James K. to Little Tell and every straight in between, make sure that they have a voice. My top priorities are maintaining the highest level of public safety, improving the city's infrastructure, and enhancing the quality of life by protecting the shoreline and supporting the community and recreation activities. Thank you.
Thank you. That commits the opening statements, and we will now start the question segment. We begin our questions with Mr. Bowman. The first question, how many cities, how many city council meetings have you attended in person in 2021, 22?
Yeah, so it's a pretty direct question. I've attended approximately three council sessions thus far. Again, I've been a resident of this community for just under two years, but in that timeframe, just about three.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman, or Buchanan, I'm sorry. Ms. Buchanan.
I'm just trying to think. I usually come to every one. Or I try to. Maybe I've missed one or two, but that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Well, can I just answer all of them, all of them that have happened and the study sessions as well? I haven't missed a single meeting yet, so my mayor pro temp has not had to lead a meeting while I've been mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Valloy.
Up to, up to January, when I retired, I was pretty much on call 24/7, so some of the meetings were hard to get to, but I obtained, I attended a few meetings last year and then a couple of meetings this year, but because of Zoom, I watch them all online, and I watch, I've watched all the League of Women Voters, and I've seen the concerns and how people present themselves.
Thank you, Mr. Zabreski.
Yeah, I think I've been to almost all of them. I admittedly probably missed one or two in the last year or two.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Buchanan. Describe all leadership or volunteer roles in Sylvan Lake in the past 24 months.
My volunteer roles have been game night. I take care of game night from beginning to end. We put signs out. We move forward with getting this room and the building set up and provide everything that anyone needs to play whatever games they need to play. We clean, we take everything down. I have volunteered at the outdoor game night that we've had. I think probably a pickleball. We've done the pickleball. I think that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
So, most of my volunteer roles definitely are being on council, you know, preparing for the meetings, leading the meetings as mayor. That takes quite a bit of work. And then also being on planning commission, so I'm kind of wearing two hats in that regard. And that pretty much does take the majority of my Sylvan Lake volunteer work. I would say that I've also helped make the Pontiac Skate Park happen, which is an adjacent community, but kind of relevant, and some people will care about that. So, I've also been involved in making a $500,000 skate park happen in Pontiac.
Thank you, Mr. Valloy.
I've participated in the goose roundup when we were allowed to do it back in Sylvan Lake. My wife and I spent several hours chasing geese across the lake, so we wouldn't have to deal with that issue here in the city. I've also, I'm also a member of the Oakland County Boat Club. I've put in a lot of monetary donations as well as a lot of hard labor, revitalizing the women's bathroom and some outdoor flooding projects there. I've participated in the haunted trail over behind Avondale on the trail with the Halloween decorations, and I was also co-chair of the Oakland County Boat Club fireworks from 2018 in which my wife and I raised more money than is the history in the history of the Oakland County Boat Club, so the city could have a great show that year. I also regularly participate in pickleball and volleyball, bocce, and pretty much every activity, outdoor concerts that I can attend.
Mr. Zabreski.
Thank you. Yeah, so volunteering, to the extent that I participated in the goose roundup last year, it was probably one of the most fun, boring times I've ever had, was a full, almost a full day. But sitting on city council, you know, we do spend a lot of time preparing and investigating and looking at what other cities are doing. That's a certain amount of volunteering, so I mean, quite a few hours go into that. But also, I try to get out and I participate in just about every event that's going on in the city. And if I don't, my wife lets me know, and she makes sure she takes me or drags me, however you want to put it. But participating in the volleyball on Wednesdays, I do participate in the Wednesday volleyball league that they have out there, kind of an impromptu group that meets, and in the community parks and recs events that they have going on. So, I'm pretty much everywhere I can be when I'm awake.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Yes, my volunteer commitments truly focus on true of the assets that actually brought me to this community. The walking trail, supporting the walking trail by way of the Friends of the Clinton River Trail, providing fiscal support and cleanup initiatives for their trails specifically, fiscal sponsor for the fireworks, again, an element that attracted me tangibly to this local community. Park cleanups, uniquely the lake, lake cleanup opportunities. I'm a kayaker, and so utilization of our waterways are important, and making sure those are clean and functioning appropriately. And also fiscal sponsor there for the skate park, bringing tangible investments by way of Trinity Health to help bring that development to not necessarily our local community, but our service area overall.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Clark. Orchard Lake Road is clearly priority for residents and city leadership. The master plan research indicates that Sylvan Lake can support more businesses. However, so many businesses on Orchard Lake Road are vacant or unavailable. We're downright ugly. How do you suggest dealing with so much vacant and unrented property in light of the research? Would you approach existing landlords to encourage or incentivize them to make their priorities more appealing in line with the appropriate market value? And how would that work? And I will give you a minute and a half.
Okay. That's, yeah, there's a few questions to unpack in there. You know, I am, I am Orchard Lake business owner, so I guess I have that perspective to help in adding to that question. So, there's, there's definitely a handful of reasons why Orchard Lake hasn't become what we hope that it one day will be. I think one of the first things that we've done is we've established a really good master plan and gotten a ton of input from people, so we can kind of like guide where we need to head. You know, the, one of the, there's definitely a chicken or an egg situation. You know, a lot of, a lot of businesses go to Orchard Lake because of the low rent. That is, does not incentivize or does not encourage the landlords who own the properties to invest in their properties. So, we don't see things like repaving. We don't see things like facade changes frequent enough that we would like to see. How do we actually get that all to start moving forward? That's a great question. I mean, you know, I would say the most important thing is to get really good businesses on Orchard Lake. That's a, it's a hard thing to nail down though exactly, you know, it's, but there is a synergistic relationship amongst business owners, and you know, just trying to work together with our landlords and get them to do some development is necessary to move forward. I hope that these landlords and property owners, they do see the master plan and understand the goal and the vision, and that can influence how we approach it.
Thank you, Mr. Valloy.
The Orchard Lake corridor has got some very interesting challenges to it. Anybody that's walked through there, frequent in our businesses, know that it has very limited parking. There's pedestrian difficulties in getting to the businesses. Some points, there's no, there's no sidewalks whatsoever. There are sidewalks that are, got potholes in them, and they're uneven, so they're not handicap friendly. Anybody walking through there has got to know that it's, they've got to dodge traffic because people are shooting in off Orchard Lake. It just, we got to figure out a way to have the people driving through our city actually stop and frequent some of those businesses. I think one of the problems is the very unattractive storefronts. I mean, you've got some very old buildings. They sit back some, and they've just had no repairs. The parking lots look horrible, and it doesn't, some of them don't even look like they're open for business. Another obstacle is the condition of Orchard Lake. We're obviously getting that improvement, and I hope that comes quicker than later because I've heard that that might be actually be extended a little bit longer than we all thought, which is going to be very unfortunate. One of the things I would be willing to do is, is encourage a forum of bringing all the business owners together and find out what, what would it take to get you guys to put some money and bring some businesses into the city. I'd also willing to be solicit other businesses that could come into our city and bring what people have said in the master plan, like the grocery stores they're looking for, and increase walkability for the area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zabreski.
Yeah, so having been on council for a little bit, a little while, you can, we've talked about this many times, and you can do a Google search and read up about creating a downtown development authority or a shopping district, and it all sounds great when you're reading on it on the internet, but how do you execute? And so, we are a heavily residential community, and I mentioned before that maybe it's time that we're going to have to spend a little bit of money on a consultant or someone that can assist us and advise us on how to make that happen. So, the improvements are happening to Orchard Lake Road. Things are heading in that direction, but I think we as a community, the people of this community, have to accept that we're going to probably have to spend some money to, to make, develop that Orchard Lake corridor.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Yes, and so this is an area that I do actually have some tangible experience in. I served as a support representative for OCOMO's and their downtown development authority, helping attract and retain and improve business attraction within their business corridor. And one of those focus opportunities related to planters. I know that sounds rather simple, but making that downtown district area more attractive for businesses overall. I think also the development relative to the road improvements is going to make a measurable impact on attracting additional businesses. But I think overall, just creating a committee, a committee amongst our council that really reaches out to those businesses and entities that we want to see within the fabric of our community. It has to be a much more active, progressive, and focused effort and initiative. But I think our, our government agency can be a piece and parcel of that activity by initiating grants. Those facade improvements are traditionally not going to be addressed by the business owners in and of themselves. We have to implement and interject funding that will curb some of the costs for those businesses that we look to attract.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
I think that the Orchard Lake corridor is very important to us as well as Kegel Harbor, Orchard Lake, and getting businesses to open up and to prosper there is going to be difficult in these times. The road, oh, the road. Hopefully, they'll get that done soon. Hopefully, that will make a difference, make a change. I think attracting businesses and business owners is a tricky situation. You've got to offer them something, and we have little to offer them. We need to get the, the shopping center people that are there to spruce up what they have, make it look attractive, make you want to go there. I think that we just need to form a committee, get some input from people who know what they're doing, and move on from there.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Valloy, and I, we're going to stay on Orchard Lake Road for just one more minute. Commercial district on Orchard Lake Road is only half a mile long. Why should marijuana facilities be allowed when Orchard Lake Road is going down to one lane?
Well, marijuana facilities, dispensaries is a very hot topic in any city. From the people I've talked to in the city, it seems like, yes, a lot of people in the city do in fact enjoy marijuana, but they don't want the dispensaries in their backyard. So, that, that challenge is going to be another thing. The other challenges are going to be part of the zoning challenges. It's my understanding that a lot of the dispensaries in this city probably would want to do the same thing, have it a certain distance from any residential homes and keep it where, you know, the kids aren't accessible and none of the problems from the neighborhood are going to affect our residents. So, it's going to be a hot topic that a lot more research is going to have to be done on, and we'll have to study it and go from there.
Mr. Zabreski.
Thank you. I don't think they should be allowed right now, but I'm not saying they should never be allowed. And city council right now is working on policies for zoning and development of properties to make sure that we don't get some kind of a structure with a big sign that doesn't add or, you know, to the attractiveness of what we envision the Orchard Lake corridor being, which kind of all leads into how do we develop that Orchard Lake corridor and how would that type of establishment fit in? At the moment, I don't, I don't think it does.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
That's a challenging question. You know, really, it's based on the sentiment of the community in terms of what, you know, fabric of businesses are invited within, within this community. It has to be cohesive, and it has to really represent the community in of itself. You know, my, my true sentiment is really focusing on the health implications related to, you know, such a business. And, you know, my thought is, you know, you have the opportunity to invite such a business in, but, but does it really, is it really cohesive with the fabric of the community? Is it something that the community wants to welcome? And if that answer is no, I don't think that that is a business that is to reside within that quarter.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
I'm not a fan. I don't think that at this time, our community needs to have this in our community. I think maybe at a future date, but right now, no, and I'm not for it at all. If the council wants to address it and try zoning and try to get a committee together to look at it, that's one thing, but personally, I'm definitely not for it, for our community. I don't think it's wise at all. I don't think it's wise at all.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Okay, so, we as council have spent about four years discussing this, so it's not like it's a new issue to us, it's something we've discussed extensively, really. You know, the question that we just had where everyone was contemplating, hey, why do we have so much trouble along Orchard Lake? Having a, I guess, trying not, trying to disallow a business that is trying to come in and potentially do improvements to the Orchard Lake corridor is, is a way of attracting new businesses. It is a way of increasing the rent on Orchard Lake. It is a way so that some of those master plan ideas that are a little bit loftier could potentially be funded. So, I mean, given that, it's something that, you know, we as a council have been discussing, and something that we're definitely considering, because we don't have a lot of ways to do what we want to get markets, to get these larger development ideas, and, and that is a mechanism to do so.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Zabrowski. And I've been doing these for a long time, and this came up once before, and that had been four years ago. What is your vision of the Whitfield property?
Good one. You know, I, I have a vision, but at the end of the day, the owner of that property, the developer of that property, has to come forward with what I think is a, is a, is a best plan that fits what we think is the vision for the Orchard Lake corridor, not just that property. If I was left to my own devices, you know, a standard type property with businesses on the front side facing the road, is a buffer between the, the traffic to the commercial property, and then behind with some residential properties that don't exceed the density that we have currently today. But again, it's a, it's a setup as a planned unit, unit development, so if the owner of the property can come forward with something creative that we didn't think of, we're open to considering that, but definitely not exceeding the density that we have today.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
I, I know this is really a hot button topic, and, you know, in my listening tour and, and speaking to various residents, there is a great deal of variety on opinions on what should be done with that particular property. I don't know that, you know, my statement or my opinion on what development should go there is, is going to be the finite, you know, answer, but I think it would be of value to have a dog park. It's, you know, a unique, this is a unique community, and I've found that there's at least two dogs almost per, per household, and there really isn't an area for, for those pets to convene, especially within our waterfront properties. But, but not uniquely just a dog park, it, it really does, does need to be a mixed use development, potentially focusing on maybe a retirement-based community with a dog park, a piece and parcel, but I think there are multiple uses and utilities for that property.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
Whitfield property, it's, it's been long discussed. It has so much meaning to people in Sylvan Lake, and I think we have to be very careful. I like the mixed use. I think some commercial is very wise as a buffer, and also as drawing, getting people along the corridor to come in. I think residential is, should be there, but we need to keep it to what our zoning is. We don't want to flood that property with people.
Did you hit your, no.
No, oh, were you calling on me?
I thought she, I didn't know she had done, I thought the mic went out. Mr. Clark.
Okay. Sorry, can you rephrase that question, just so that I'm fresh?
What is your vision for the Whitfield property?
Okay. So, when it comes to the Whitfield property, my division is, there definitely needs to be a development there. I don't like an empty field that's, you know, infrequently mowed, and, you know, I, I view that as blight. So, so there definitely needs to be something there. However, anyone on council needs to be very cautious about how much they commit to exactly what they want there. We don't have anything directly in front of us right now, we have no real proposal. It's unwise to step too liberally around and, and potentially incriminate yourself. But with that being said, I definitely would like to see something developed. I, you know, it is zone C2 with many exceptions, so that, that definitely kind of lends itself to commercial. Orchard Lake is, is a very vibrant potential commercial district, and that would be a large, you know, development that, that could exist there, and, and I would like to see something great, but I, I need to see that proposal first before I could commit to that.
Thank you, Mr. Voss.
Right now, the way the property is, Sylvan Lake remains the prettiest little city. So, if it doesn't get developed, I think everyone in this room realized, we're, our city's going to stay the same way, way it is, but we don't know that the developer's going to go along with that plan. Some of my visions or thoughts, I would love to see a nine-hole golf course in there, maybe a pool, maybe a small country club, dog parks. I think it's all great to, and maybe some light commercial would be great in there, but we don't know what the developer's going to bring. Personally, I wouldn't be opposed to single-family housing, but we don't want to increase the population of this city too much, that we're going to hurt our infrastructure and our access to the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Bowman. How do you feel about converting the tennis courts to pickleball courts?
Well, I'll tell you, I don't, I don't want to offend the current tennis players, but I'm learning that pickleball is wildly popular. I, I think that you can cohabitate and have both sports within, within that particular tennis court format, maybe adjusting the lines, but making that full conversion, I think might be somewhat prohibitive of those that like to, to enjoy tennis uniquely.
Thank you, Ms. Buchanan.
Well, I think that the tennis courts, we only have so much property, and that is what's there. And we need to share it. And I think that a tennis court and take the other tennis court, and we can make four pickleball courts out of that. And we're sharing the property, we're sharing both interests in the tennis players, as well as the pickleball players. And we're working on getting the tennis courts redone, so that this can happen, where we can put both and cohabitate together, which makes sense.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Okay, so as someone who probably plays tennis more than I play pickleball, I, I think that there is room for both, I really do. I, I think that we need to maybe be a little more proactive about some sort of a sign-up thing, so that we can have some metrics to say, hey, this, this does make sense, this doesn't make sense in terms of use, like, so, you know, do we really need four pickleball courts? Are we okay with one tennis court? I would very much like to see like a little bit more information about that. We, we very well may be also hearing about this and voting on this, so I want to be very careful to, to, to just say that, you know, I'm supportive of both user groups, I think that there's a way to work together collectively. You know, if, if it's such a pinch point that we need to do something about it, like, we, we may need to consider some more funding and, and how to, to get that for our parks, and that might be the actual solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Verlitt.
I'm all for increasing the quality of life in the city. So, if we can cohabitate together, there's a way that we can share the tennis courts and the pickleball courts, that would be phenomenal. If the group Friends of the Court, who, my wife is now recently a member, which means I'll probably be helping out too, if there's a way we can raise enough money to bring brand-new pickleball courts into the city, that'd be even phenomenal, but I know that's a great expense. But as, pickleball's not going away, it's only getting bigger and bigger. Honestly, personally, I don't see a lot of people playing tennis, but that could be the condition of the courts, and if they get improved, they might start playing more tennis. But if they do, like I said, we're going to have to work out a system where we can all share the, share the courts together. But I bought my rackets after the first time I played, and I absolutely love it, and I'm not going away, and I'm sure if you all try it, you're going to join too, so, you'll love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zabrowski.
Thank you. I, I play tennis too, and, and as sitting on city council, it's one of the hardest things you have to do, is, you know, consider everybody's view, not just your own view. And so, we talked about it at the last city council, at least sharing one of the courts, at least maintaining the one of, the other tennis court for tennis use, and I actually put down a proposal, do we want to consider expending some capital to expand that? There seems to be a lot of interest in this. But then a wise person also told me that there was a time when shuffleboard was huge, and, and horseshoes were huge, and if we invested money in those, we'd be sitting there looking at some shuffleboard courts out there. But there seems to be some momentum now, and I think that Friends of the Court that was formed is fantastic, I hope they can come together, I hope they can generate some, some ideas. It's not as expensive, from what I've read, to build a pickleball court. It doesn't need the tall fences, which are the highest, most expense from what I've been reading about these things, so maybe there's a way to do it with some of our limited resources, and if we can get enough donations going, we can, we can make it happen.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Ms. Buchanan. The shore of Ferndale, between the Boat Club and Big Beach, is eroding by the feet and yards every year. How can we correct that? And I'm going to add a, a second part to that question. What is your city's relationship to the Oakland County Boat Club? So, I guess both of these are boat club-related questions, and we'll start with Ms. Buchanan.
Well, I was walking my dog, and someone came up to me and pointed out that there was deterioration from the Big Beach to the Boat Club. And it is deteriorating. I think we need to address this, and I know it's going to cost a lot of money to put a wall in there. Maybe that's what needs to be happened, I don't know. I think that the council needs to address this and look into it. It's not something that's going to be corrected immediately or soon, it's been going on for years.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you.
Okay, so we, we were just saying, the Big Beach between, or the Big Beach to the OCBC, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So, so for that section, I, I think that probably putting something like bouldering, like we did around the corner, would make a lot of sense. It, it helps by breaking up the waves and, and not pushing them back out like seawall. You know, people generally want, I think also people want somewhere to launch their kayaks and paddle boards over there, I think that's very important. So, I'd be all for trying to, you know, do something to address that, that deterioration. The OCBC question?
What is the view on the city relationship to the OCBC?
I think it's good, it's probably better than it's been in a while, they're showing up at meetings, and they're, you know, they're, they're expressing their viewpoints, and we're hearing them, and we're working together. We obviously didn't pass a noise ordinance, so, you know, we're, we hear you.
Thank you, Mr. Verlitt.
Regarding the area that's being eroded, I agree with Mr. Clark. I believe that boulders could solve that problem if you get them a little bit larger than the, than the, a little over the land, I think it would really help that issue. If not, we'd have to look towards maybe going with a seawall in the future. My understanding is the last expense for the seizure, seawall east of the beach was approximately 118,000 for approximately 800 feet. So, it's, it is a great expense, but if our lake is, is eroding away, it's something that we're going to have to think about, but I do believe boulders would help that issue. As far as the relationship with the Oakland County Boat Club, I am a member. I have in the past offered my services to be a liaison between the city and the Boat Club. I, I think I could fairly represent, I have had several conversations with John Martin over the years, as well as the Chief of Police and, and Sergeant Mandu, and I think I resolved a lot of things in the past, and I, I think they're on the right course right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zabrowski.
Thank you. Yeah, the sand erosion, that's something I, I bring up to John every year, I say, hey, can we get a tractor full of that beautiful sand that's making its way over to the, to the boat ramp and bring it back over? So, it's, 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 it has been eroding, and you can see, I've got a boat dock over there, we're out 60, 70 feet now, because it just tends to fill in, we have to do something. I'm not sure what the answer is, boulder seems to be the thing that everybody's going to, but I think we need a little bit of input from our engineers to make sure that's the right solution before we spend the money. And boulders will be cheaper than installing a metal seawall, most of that 118,000 dollars expense, I think, was the, the metal, or the vinyl and metal seawall that they installed. And then as far as Oakland County Boat Club, I mean, that's one of the reasons I, I first came here playing shuffleboard upstairs before they redesigned, redesigned, moved it downstairs. I'm not a member, but my wife and I frequent there with our friends who are members, and yeah, I think the relationship's good.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Yeah, so I, I think relative to the erosion challenge, I, I think you have to invite the experts in to be able to give you an assessment, as well as the options in terms of how to improve. And I think we've got an expert right here in our backyard, our Oakland County Water Resource Commission, who really focuses on water control, water quality, as well as water management. But that being more of an erosion control issue, again, they have the expertise, they have the experience and the wherewithal to be able to give us counsel on how to improve and address. So, leaning on some of our community partners and some of the assets within our, our community, I think is most appropriate. The relationship with the Oakland County Boat Club, I think it is a unique resource, it is a business within the fabric of a community. Oftentimes, you have challenges amongst neighbors, but despite those challenges, I think they are a good and responsible neighbor, and one that we should continue to support.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Clark, and this question is in regards to a ballot issue on the county. What are your views on the Oakland County SMART service, and how would that benefit Sylvan Lake?
So, I think I was just at the Beacon talking about this. I, I'm definitely, you know, I see it from two sides. We had, when we, when we addressed it last time and we opted out, we had very low ridership. This was about 15 years ago, if John steered me in the right direction. So, we basically felt, hey, you know, this is a bigger liability than it is a benefit, we're not into it. However, we have seen the Orchard Lake businesses shutter, ones that can't get employment. So, I mean, we have, we do have needs as a community that aren't necessarily just our own community members. Now, I'm not saying this is the right way to go, I, I view it as kind of like a really, really big way to handle that problem, but, you know, some creative means of transportation is really necessary for Orchard Lake corridor. So, you know, it's something I haven't really fully made my mind up on admittedly, but I was quoted talking about it, so, yeah, I mean, you know, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Verlitt.
Could you repeat the question, please?
What is relationship of Sylvan Lake with the Oakland County SMART ballot issue?
Regarding the SMART service through Sylvan Lake, from, from what I've heard, I know there've been studies over the years, that it really hasn't been an issue for the residents of this city. I know that Sylvan Lake, Orchard Lake, and Kegel have opted out over the past few years of, of the SMART bus system, and this new proposal, from my understanding, it doesn't allow opt-outs anymore, so if it passes, it's my understanding that we all will, as taxpayers, will pay for this SMART bus system whether we want it or not. I do know that over at James Kane Telegraph, there are, there are busing access over there for residents, I know it's around the lake, but unless we study it further, I don't know that there's a, a large need for us being involved in the SMART system.
Thank you, Mr. Zabrowski.
Yeah, that was my understanding too, that if, if it passes, we're in, we don't necessarily opt-out anymore, if that's true. So, I agree, I don't think there's a need right now, based on the ridership that we had in the last time we looked at this, so at this point, I don't, I don't necessarily see us needing to endorse it, but.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
Public transportation is a challenge, not, not just in Sylvan Lake, but I would say regionally. We have a Swiss cheese approach to transportation, having communities that are a piece and parcel of a, a transportation grid, and other communities that are not. But I think it is very important and valuable to review the ridership within that immediate community, to determine if it is appropriate for those residents. But transportation is an issue. Transportation allows individuals to be gainful participants within their, their local community, and- it is appropriate for those residents. But transportation is an issue. Transportation allows individuals to be gainful participants within their local community, and it's an asset that allows individuals to do that. So I think focusing on ridership and making a determination in that regard is the best approach for Sylvan Lake.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan.
In the past, we really haven't had anyone using or able to use the transit system. In other words, we, there didn't seem to be a need. I'm not sure that there is now. However, if we can't opt out, we may end up with it anyways. But I don't see the ridership from Sylvan Lake using it. And I'm not sure we want to have a bus stop or whatever we'll have to pay for. It's another maintenance thing that we will deal with, with not a lot of participation from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next question, we will start with Mr. Roy, Deloyes. This quick one. Who paid for the game night equipment?
Pardon me?
Who paid for the game night equipment? I don't know where that come from, but it came from the audience.
I'm going to have to be honest and say, I don't know who paid for the equipment. Whoever you are, thank you. If you need more equipment, I'd be happy to donate it, but I am not certain on that question.
Thank you. Mr. Zabreski.
But I have taken advantage of using it.
Mr. Zabreski.
I know that we approved, as city council, the budget for Parks and Rec and allocations of funds. I'm not exactly sure about those specific items, but it could either be donations or it could have been through the city funds.
Thank you. Mr. Bowman.
I'm going to respond and say that it was a community effort. I know there's a great deal of fundraising that transpires by way of residents in and of themselves, but also through our Parks and Recreation Group. So I would make the determination that it was either community members or our Parks and Recreation.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan.
Game night, the, all of the cards and whatever we use, I have paid for. I've donated. We have donated all the tables that they use, the card tables, because there weren't any here. So we donated those. As far as the other things that we use are all donated.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
I really couldn't do a better job explaining it than Feather, because she is actually responsible for it. So I guess that's the answer. We just got it.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Mr. Zabrowski. What direct experience do you have with community engagement and development?
So, having sat on city council for a few years, I mean, I have participated in several leadership activities around, for example, the Tri-City Fire Board, working with them. Actually did a presentation to the Tri-City Fire Board a few years back to try and find a better way to do the cost sharing, a more equitable way to do the cost sharing. Also participated earlier on in the park build, for the Ferndale Park play structure, raising the funds for that. And then also, I sponsored or asked to have the Parks and Rec Committee formally recognized as a committee within Sylvan Lake when that happened a few years ago.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
I would say, you know, most of my professional experiences relate to community development. My current role with Trinity Health is community outreach, and I've also served in previous capacities as county commissioner. I've also, again, served as Downtown Development Authority Support for the community of Oakhamos. And, you know, I really want to also reflect on the current role with Trinity Health Oakland, community needs assessments. That really is a focus on studying the needs of your local community, engaging residents, gathering qualitative and quantitative data, and determining what the challenges are of that local community. So on a day-to-day basis, day in and day out, that's my current function. And I look forward to continuing to do that here locally within Sylvan Lake as well.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan.
Could you please repeat the question?
Certainly. What direct experience do you have with community engagement and development?
Community engagement, I have been involved in different areas of the community. I have supported and worked, building relationships, and moving forward with different groups in different areas, promoting their accomplishments. As far as community, I'm involved in whatever I can be involved in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clark.
So I think the thing I'm most proud of in terms of community engagement would be the fact that we created the application process to let members of the community come out and with a good idea, and they can, you know, it's vetted by our city manager right now, but they can kind of make it, their idea become a reality. And just seeing what that small change, that application process had, and how many people stepped up and said, hey, I want to, you know, I have a different idea for how I want to engage the community. So empowering people to do that was the thing that I'm, I guess, I'm most proud of in terms of community engagement. Now, on the other hand, just being part of the community is super important, too. Always trying to show up at events, you know, being kind, helping, lending a hand when I can, those kind of things, you know, they go the furthest. Those are, that's the heavy lifting. The heavy lifting is something that I love to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Voss.
For many years of my career, I was an administrative liaison between the City of Des Moines Police Department and its approximately 12,000 residents on a routine basis. I interacted with city council and resolving problems, especially problems of crime safety and community policing. I worked with the public on developing programs, safety programs, and offered advice on trying to make their homes and their areas a softer target on crime. As far as in Sylvan, I participated in the fireworks committee a couple of years ago. And like I said, we put on a good show because we went door-to-door, and we raised a lot of money for the city. I've also been actively involved in Goodfellows, which is an organization that gives children Christmases who can't afford Christmases. Additionally, I would support, in the future, crime seminars and fraud seminars for the residents of the city, because I know we have an aging population, and I know what, how to keep the citizens of this safe with regard to fraud and schemes, so.
Thank you. That ends the questions from the audience. We will now start with the closing remarks in reverse order, and we'll start with Mr. Zabreski. One hour, or one minute, not an hour.
Thank you for the warning. Wasn't very ready, but hey, again, thank you, everybody, for being here. Service is often referred to as love and action. Prior to ever running for city council, my actions included participating in the community build of the Ferndale play structure, volunteering on the Parks and Recreation Committee, and attending many planning commission and city council meetings to learn how the city operates. While on city council, I pushed for more transparency in government, like making the city ordinances available online. I also met with the Tri-City Fire Board to try and negotiate a more equitable cost-sharing proposal, and I proposed a bonus-based compensation structure to help keep the budget balanced during the economic downturn. Thank you again to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event, and thank you to anyone that has ever defended America and our right to vote. As you consider who to vote for November 8th, I hope that my actions and results speak as loudly as promises made at this candidate's forum tonight. You can share your thoughts or concerns with me by emailing votemikez@gmail.com. And finally, I respectfully ask for your support and that you please vote for Michael Zabreski on November 8th.
Thank you. Mr. Deloyes. I'm sorry.
I've been serving the public since 1989, and I desire to continue to serve the public, the residents of Sylvan Lake, to the best of my ability. As a police officer, I've seen people at their worst, and I've seen them at their best. I know what it takes to keep our residents safe and secure in this city. To my knowledge, only one other criminal justice practitioner has ever served on city council, and that name was Jim Enders. While I never had the chance to meet Jim, I know that he was well-respected and loved in this community. I believe that Jim's life career kept him in tune with residents while maintaining the highest level of honesty, integrity, and commitment. Since becoming, I'm sorry, could you show the time? Thank you. In closing, I humbly ask for your support on November 8th and pledge to represent each of you fairly and to provide the highest level of transparency. I will listen with empathy, I will represent equally, and I will serve with integrity. If you give me a chance to represent you, I ask that you hold me accountable if I don't hold up to your standards. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
I'd like to thank city clerk Denise and the League of Women Voters for putting on this event, and of course, you all for attending, and those of you out there watching. I appreciate having a platform to share my ideas, accomplishments, and vision. My reason for being here is I want to best represent all of you. And, you know, as your mayor, I have brought the council and community together. We have increased cooperation in the parks and in our community. A good idea and some passion has a chance to flourish in our city. We are more together today than when I was elected four years ago. My name is Ben Clark. I am your mayor, a council member on the planning commission. I ask you for, I ask for you to vote for me this November so I can continue that legacy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Buchanan.
Once again, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting this event this evening, and Denise. Thank you for the opportunity to share with you why I am running for city council. We've covered a lot of interesting topics this evening, and I would like to highlight the key topics I'm focused on as your next city council member. Safety and security of all the residents of Sylvan Lake, unifying the committee, the community through events and gatherings like the Wednesday night game night. Thank you all for coming, and I look forward to seeing you out and about and your vote on November 8th. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman.
I close out today's session in the same way that I started, by communicating to you all that I'm an experienced public servant. I'm a graduate of Detroit Country Day, Florida State University, where I obtained an international affairs degree, and Wayne State University, where I obtained a master's in public administration. I've served as a county commissioner. I have represented communities, I've represented residents. I have a passion for service, and I would like to use that experience, that passion, to support our local community. I'm focusing on public safety, water quality, and economic development for our residents, and I'd like to be a fresh voice and a fresh face to advocate for you and your needs. Again, I look forward to your support, and hopefully I can gain that by way of my listening tour. And you can reach me directly by phone, 248-342-4312.
Thank you. The sponsor we'd like to thank the candidates, the audience, city clerk Denise Striden, the cable company, for their participation in this candidate's forum. For further nonpartisan information on the candidates, please check the League of Women Voters website on our voter guide, lwvoa.org, or connect with vote4011.com. When known, broadcast times of this forum will be on the LWVOA and the Sylvan Lake websites. The League of Women Voters is funded by contributions from concerned citizens and businesses. Our membership is open to men and women over the age of 16. Remember to vote on November 8th, 2022. And don't forget the bottom part of the ballot, which is the judges and so forth, that a lot of people don't get. Democracy is not a spectator sport. Thank you, and good night.